I will call this meeting of the Woodburn Planning Commission to order. Uh, today's date is September eleventh, twenty twenty-five. My name is Lisa Elsmore. I am the Chair of the Planning Commission. Can I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bartel.
I'm here.
Commissioner Berlin.
Here.
Commissioner Bravo.
Here.
Commissioner May.
Here.
Vice Chair Hernandez Mahia.
Here.
Chair Ellsworth.
Here.
And I have an excused absence from Commissioner Lass.
Would you join me in the flag smoke, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in all. Right. I see we have minutes tonight as everyone had a chance to look through the minutes. Are there any additions, corrections? Comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'm going to approve the minutes as.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
Motion and second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Hey, do we have any business from the audience that is not otherwise on the agenda? Anything that we're not already scheduled to talk about? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any communications from staff?
None.
Okay. Tonight, we have a public hearing. It's a quasi judicial public hearing and it's, the purpose of this hearing is to ensure that all interested parties offer relevant evidence to the commission in a timely and orderly manner. Because this is a quasi judicial hearing, commissioners should maintain an open mind and not make any decisions until after the hearing is closed and all evidence is presented at the hearing and has been considered. Okay? With that, I'd like to open the public hearing on Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen. ER twenty-five dash zero four, SUB twenty-five dash zero two. This is a design review and a street adjustment application for the proposed development of a new drive-through restaurant at fifteen sixteen Mount Hood Avenue in Woodburn. Okay, so with that, let's move into the declarations. Has anyone had any expertise contact with the applicant or another individual? No, okay, seeing none, hearing none. How about site visits?
Me.
Okay.
I work across the street.
Okay.
I work across the street from them every day, so.
I just shopped at By Mart there and Coastal Farms and stuff.
Okay.
Big food, so.
All right, two fourteen, I will pass it. Well, given the site visits and the visuals that we have, are there any conflicts or biases that would preclude anyone on the commission from making an impartial decision in this matter? No.
No.
Seeing and hearing none, are there any challenges to any member of the commission? Okay, seeing none. Can we go ahead and read the hearing statement, please?
Of course. Both Oregon Law and the Woodburn Development Ordinance govern evidentiary quasi judicial land use hearings and require that at the commencement of a hearing, this, a statement be read to all persons in attendance. The applicable substantive criteria for this land use decision are listed in the staff report and are as follows from the Woodburn Development Ordinance, W E O two point zero three, two point zero six, two point zero seven point zero eight, three point zero one through three point zero seven, three point one oh, three point one one, four point oh one, four point oh two, five point oh three point oh two, and five point oh three point oh three. The hearing will proceed in the following general order: staff report, applicant's presentations, testimony in favor of the application, testimony in opposition to the application, rebuttal, closure of the record, deliberation, and decision. All testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the applicable substantive criteria just stated or other criteria in a plan or land use regulation which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise a constitutional or other issue relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Any party wanting a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request while the record is still open.
You. Do we have a staff, a staff report?
We do. I'm Heidi Hinshaw, Associate Planner, here to present the staff report for Popeyes. We're here for a public hearing type three land use application as Chair Ellsworth just went through. Uh, Planning Commission is tasked with verifying compliance with the applicable development standards and issuing a final decision. The staff report and its attachments are entered into the record and so far no testimony has been received. Uh, it sounds like all of you are very well aware of the location, uh, but here's a map showing the overview. Uh, it's near the intersection with Highway two fourteen and ninety-nine, uh, in the shopping center of Mega Foods and By Mart. Oh. Sorry, Commissioner, yes?
Sure.
Go back to. I don't know, that's internal. Yeah.
There you go.
Sorry, guys.
So nice you get to hear it twice, Commissioner Bartel.
Okay, can you see it? Not yet. See, this is because I was like, oh, it's gonna be fine. We don't need Dan. My job.
You need to click on your window there.
That it?
Yeah.
That's it. That's gonna be it.
There you go.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for saying something. I appreciate it.
Like what?
Okay, I don't know how to. All right, so, uh, let's see. Here is the map overview. Like I said, uh, Mega Foods, By Mart, Coastal Farm. This is what the site looks like now. It's developed as a parking lot with just a few parking spaces, uh, and minimal landscaping. It's commercial general surrounded by commercial general. Uh, between these three pictures, you get a sense of the kind of sea of asphalt that's in the area and lack of pedestrian connectivity within the site. So the major overarching goal of this, um, of SASS approach to this was to improve the experience of this site. So everyone uses it. How do we make it better for the community? So the things that we focused on were pedestrian connectivity and landscaping, uh, for all the known benefits of landscaping, including clean air uh, and actually water retention since the site floods occasionally. So, um, but that's all I'll say about that. Um, you can see right here, it's a curb tight sidewalk, only five feet wide. And it's right next to cars going fifty-five miles an hour. We'll come back to that a little bit more. So the proposal, hmm, now I do need to get rid of this. Yeah. The proposal is a limited service eating place. That's the official designation in the code. Uh, it's a drive-through with very limited indoor dining, two thousand five hundred and sixty-one square feet, two drive-through lanes, and this is the, uh, new most efficient way to get cars through quickly is that you start out with two lanes and then go into one. You order here undercover and then drive through on your way. Uh, there'll be an improved parking lot, so they're gonna regrade it, re-cave it, uh, stripe it, put in handicap parking. Uh, and every ten spaces, there will be a landscape island. Uh, just to orient you, this is McDonald's over on this side and your north is up. Uh, there'll be the new, this, this exists, but it's just a dirt patch. It's, uh, right here. So, uh, we've asked for a tree to be there in the conditions of approval. The street adjustment is just to not do a bike lane here, which, uh, as you're probably very familiar with, there is no bike lane on two fourteen anywhere near there. So we did think that their proposal is actually better than if there was a bike lane. So, uh, in the code, what the provision is, is if you're applying for a street adjustment to not provide a bike lane, you have to make an eight foot wide sidewalk that's protected by a landscape strip. And that's what they're proposing. Across the street, uh, roughly is the Pizza Hut and some of you may remember that when it came across, uh, this commission. But this will be somewhat similar to what it will look like. It, you've got a nice landscape strip, trees, a wide sidewalk, and access to the restaurant from the sidewalk. There's, I have a better picture of that in a minute, but at the aerial view is, shows that. This is an example of a property that was, uh, built or remodeled recently. This is the new design aesthetic. If you're familiar with the old one, this is what the new design looks like. Uh, and you can see they kind of have a somewhat similar approach to the program. Uh, we've got landscape strip, tree, sidewalk. It looks like ours sidewalk is gonna be bigger and we aren't proposing a fence here. Um, but this light looks similar to what was shown on their photometric plan and you can see it's full cutoff, so that meets code and is good. The architectural design, uh, met or exceeded all of the architectural requirements in the code. Um, it's neutral colors with pops of brightness. Uh, you can see, well, you can kind of see it better in this picture, these overhangs for pedestrians and, uh, staff, there's an overhang over the staff entrance door. Um, this is the, so this is the facade facing west. That's the primary entrance and then this is the north facade. Uh, so our, again, our big goal was to make this look good from the street and also make it safe to move about the shopping center. So, um, this is going to be spandrel glass, which is, you can't see through it, but the code provision is that thirty percent of the facade be windows. And so even though this is actually their kitchen and bathrooms, they're putting in the glass and they were okay with that, so. So, um, this is their landscape plan. So you can see they put in a ton of landscaping, uh, which is in the code, they're required to, but they actually exceeded the plant unit values that they were, they had to do. Uh, the requirement is to put in one street tree every thirty feet and, um, you know, we don't really want them to plant any in the middle of the intersection, so they didn't, but otherwise it's about seven trees and we did give them a little, um, leeway flexibility in that they can pay a fee in lieu for up to five trees if there's weird infrastructure stuff that has to go underground that doesn't fit in the landscape strip. Um, so there's gonna be two rows of trees. These are sixty foot at maturity large trees and then I believe these are medium trees in the back with lots of shrubbery and ground cover in between. So it should look really lush and nice. Uh, this is the existing bus stop. Um, I meant to actually wipe this out because it, they told us it was a mistake. It's not gonna be remodeled, just FYI, it's still on there. Um, so the bus stop is staying the same and the sidewalk will wrap around it. And I, here's, you can see this sidewalk is gonna come directly in to the restaurant and then this sidewalk. So say you get off the bus, you'll walk this way and down and then when we, we'll get to it later, the, the increased pedestrian connectivity will continue on from here. Let's see what else. Oh, they, uh, this is the screening for the dumpster intercycling. Can I ask a question about the bus stop? Uh, can we do questions now or do we need to wait? Yeah, yeah, sure. Questions are great. So, uh, I'm, the way it works now, the bus comes into the parking lot and lets people on and off. So is that still gonna be able to work? It doesn't really stop on the highway there. Yeah, it, um, turns out, they never actually had approval to use that space. None of the three transit agencies that use that space currently have approval to use it. So, uh, that was flagged for us way back in like February, March and so, uh, Chariots, Candy Area Transit and the Woodburn Transit System, um, well, Chariots and CAT are moving their, their loading and trans, transfer station. They're moving it elsewhere. We don't know where, but it's also, uh, Kathy McCloskey, our transit director, said that all of that's supposed to be up and going by January. Um, and then, as you know, there's the the transportation, uh, system plans, uh, is set to be adopted in January and, uh, what the Woodburn bus will do is stop in traffic. That is their preference. Uh, so the idea is that they will stop here, load and unload and move on. Uh, thank you. And not use this side of this area at all. How's that, Deb? Oh, Commissioner Bartel, apologies. That works. Thanks so much. Okay, of course. Uh, yep, that's just in case I forgot to tell you anything. Uh, they're putting in a stop sign down on the southwestern corner of the property. Again, for pedestrian safety, just safety in, in general. This right here is a very worn down speed hump. Uh, and so we didn't condition anything around this speed hump, but if they put in a crossing here, we'll see how that works. So here we are to the grand part. I suggested two options for getting folks down here and generally around the shopping centers more safely, but they're also welcome to present another option if it, if it meets those same needs. I don't, I'm not sure what that would look like, but you know, I'm not a civil engineer, so.
Okay. Can you slow down just a little bit and show us what you're talking about, the proposal? I'm just seeing a mouse go like this.
Oh, sorry. Uh, well, they, they haven't proposed anything, but we've conditioned.
You have.
Yes. We conditioned that they basically either put a crosswalk here and here.
Okay.
Which could, corresponds to the blue line.
Isn't that where all the traffic goes between Mega Foods and, and, uh, Coastal Farms and everything?
Yes, this is the primary drive aisle.
Yeah.
Or it would be a crossing right here at this earlier spot and then connecting in with the crosswalk that McDonald's painted over here, which is this.
The light is there, though. I mean, there's a lot, there are a lot of cars there.
The light is up here, uh, at the, at the intersection.
This street, right.
Yep. Yep. Well, and so what we anticipate, we know that it's very busy.
Yeah.
Definitely. Um, we also know that as Chair Ellsworth, uh, said, legacy is across the street. Or no, sorry. Commissioner Bartel works at Legacy. Um, and a lot of people walk across all the time. So we wanna make sure they're safe. So a crosswalk and that could, that'll look like either these zebra stripes or, uh, different material in the, in the ground. Um, am I, am I kind of answering your query?
Yes.
Okay.
You're really familiar with this?
I know, I'm sorry.
We're not, so you just need to slow down a tiny.
Of course. No, I appreciate the feedback.
And as well, anyone that's watching or going to be repaying it later on.
Yes.
It's helpful.
You're right. I am sort of dreaming about chicken, so. Uh, so for transit, um, there, there's a contribution, uh, which is we charge to everyone based on parking spaces. So that's just over three grand, uh, to go into the pool for transit. Did I go too fast?
I don't know.
Oh. Yeah, that's just, yeah, that's the transit litigation fee. Okay, so transportation impacts. Obviously, as we've discussed, this intersection is very busy and it needs a little love. Uh, so the condition is that they, uh, upgrade these ramps to be ADA accessible. This is also halfway in their property. Well, maybe a little less than half, but if you put in one side, you have to put in the other side based on ODOT rules. Uh, this is an ODOT managed facility. And then we've conditioned that they restripe this crosswalk as well as the north-south crosswalk. Um, ODOT may or may not ask that they stripe this, uh, the southern, no, western crosswalk. Uh, we didn't ask for that, but all of, all of these conditions for traffic improvement are contingent upon ODOT approval and the assumption that they will work with ODOT to make it work. Any questions about this? This is kind of a big one.
Heidi, you had a conversation with ODOT about the, our conditions, which are for the crosswalks to be restripped that you have highlighted in yellow plus the two ADA improvements in the circles and they were on board with it in our conversation. Is that right?
That's correct.
So we expect that to happen. Of course, it's a no dot facility, so we've conditioned it with the caveat that it has to be pursuant to ODOT's requirements. But at this point in time, we think it'd be acceptable.
Yes. So staff recommendation is that it be approved with the conditions that we've outlined. Uh, and then do you have more questions for me? I'd like to point out that, uh, the landowner is here and also the architect and the civil engineer is online. So if there's more detailed questions, probably the architect and civil engineer can address those better. Is there a slide that? Is there a slide that outlines the specific, um, conditions? Just one slide or two slides? So I could try to pull up the staff report. We wanted to go through them. If you can tell me what page it's on, I just was, I was reading through it again today and I, I was trying to figure out, okay, what are the conditions for approval, just to make sure I understood them? Yep. So in your pocket, right after the staff report should be a stapled, uh, four-page, uh, double-sided recommended conditions of approval. Oh, wait, here we go.
Yes.
Yep, yes. Thank you. And then the condition, uh, regarding the crosswalks and ADA ramps is condition number sixteen, which is on the last page.
For everyone's benefit, I'm, I'm happy to kind of quickly read it out loud if that's all right. So it's crosswalks and ADA ramps. Upgrade the ramps on both sides of the southerly east-west crosswalk in the Mount Hood Highway, Highway fourteen intersect, two fourteen intersection with the shared driveway to comply with current ADA requirements and restripe at least the south and east crosswalks in coordination with ODOT. And that's what that graphic showed earlier with the L signs.
And in addition, the other, uh, conditions I think are worth note is the eight-foot sidewalks, the additional, uh, strip so that there's a buffer or a barrier between the traffic and, and the site.
The drive-through, that's correct.
The, it looks like there was no, the landscape plan is all fine. Um,
And then the internals, the internal pedestrian access crosswalk that we're looking for. So there's more connectivity from this out parcel, this fast food center to the rest of the shopping center.
So when you go in, you have to go around and cross traffic coming this way in your car, right?
When you go in, you can immediately access the drive-through. I should pull up a site plan, kind of walk through the, there we go.
So this is McDonald's over here.
Right.
And this is, so if you're driving from the west, you'll pull in here and drive in here and park or go through the drive-through.
So this here is all sidewalk. Which is Mount, which is two fourteen? This one.
Okay.
Right, okay. So then the traffic light is there.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So incoming traffic has to cross over to get into the restaurant.
Mm-hmm. Cross over.
Pro, go, yeah, across the incoming lane, uh, the outgoing lane.
Um, maybe if I pulled up the aerial.
Could I, uh, chime in? Maybe I think I, I think I understand what she's trying to say. Uh, this is Jenna, this is Jenna with AAI Engineering, uh, the civil engineer. So I, I'm not sure which commissioner is saying this, but, um, it sounds like what you're saying is that when they pull into the shared access, wh- where they can either turn right and to go to McDonald's, they would have to turn left into Popeyes to turn in. And I can, I can, I can understand your issue with the crossing traffic and one of the conditions that Heidi had mentioned is that they are requiring us to put in a stop sign there. So actually cars will be stopped and so, um,
They'll come on the, yeah, ask McDonald's.
If you, maybe Heidi, I think on one of your slides, you showed where we, you were requiring us to put in that stop sign, um, kind of where that speed hump is. Yes, okay, yeah.
The stop sign will be right here. Can you see my pointer?
Yeah.
Okay.
There was also, uh, I was gonna ask, there was, I thought I saw an image that seemed to show like there was gonna be a little bit of a piece of that incoming that seemed like it was gonna be like returning. So you can see where that bottom middle car is as, as you exit. It almost seemed like, I don't know if these are lines are gonna be repainted or not necessarily. I didn't hear it, but as of that would, maybe again, maybe with all the lines, I just kind of imagined it. So not, that's not happening.
Yeah, actually, um, one of the condi, I think it is one of the conditions and it is something that has already been discussed with ODOT as well is that that shared access to turn on to Mount Hood will have to be restripped. Um, so that will have some new, uh, lane delineage. And, um, I did some preliminary design and it has to be kind of approved with ODOT because it is to go on to their highway. But if you pan up north, Heidi, I was kind of mirroring what was going on directly across the street from us. So if you just pan and then zoom in. Um, a lot of time, I keep going, okay, so you see how there's like kind of a transition for that, if you keep going north a little bit, that, that, to get to that from two lanes to three lanes, it kind of transitions out. So it's not a the exact kind of situation, but the idea, and I'm not, I'm not sure if, um, it was included in the the packet that Heidi has, but, um, the idea that my intention for our intersection, if you go back to ours, Heidi, um, is that at this, what we're gonna call this little intersection, which is with, um, the Popeyes entrance to the east, the McDonald's, uh, entrance to the west and then the Mega Foods or the By Mart to the south. At that little intersection, the intent is though that there's just, uh, two lanes of traffic, so one lane each way. And then it will widen and transition into those three lanes. And the intent is that it kind of, by limiting, instead of having two lanes where cars are trying to get into, if there's just one lane, it kind of prevents sort of confusion and makes everyone go into the same place. And then with that stop sign, kind of makes, make people navigate there, if that makes sense.
It does. Um, I do recall and I, I thought it was gonna be a switch over like from, you know, when you have sometimes the, the switching or the turning lane from one direction going off into then like the other.
But that little.
When you have a middle, yeah, when you have a middle lane and for one, it turns to turn, but then for the bottom, it's for the, the other ones kind of exiting, but it's not that it's just.
Exactly.
To block them out. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. I don't think I made sense, but I understood myself.
It's hard to describe it without seeing it, but I think, yeah, we're the, there will be some strapping to delineate the traffic at that intersection.
Not bottom there.
In the side?
Um, yeah, in the conditions. Okay, so fourteen. Um, that image there does, I knew I saw it somewhere. Um,
That's a condition that sort of delineates and, uh, where the drive-through area is.
Yeah.
Right now it's shown as open. So we have a condition so that that will be. Right now it's shown as open. So we have a condition so that that will be sort of delineated. So you don't have a mixture of traffic, so that the drive-through lane.
Condition is for something else, but the image shows that change.
Right.
And that she just described.
Oh, I see. Yeah. And this is the most updated site plan. And in this one, uh, it doesn't show the arrows. I'm not sure that I have that image in this PowerPoint. No, I don't.
That's right. I have another question. Um, cause on what some of the maps, it shows arrows of how traffic is expected to flow. Um, but when I was seeing some of them that don't have the arrows, I initially was thinking, okay, well, you're gonna have traffic going in the opposite direction from how some of the arrows are going. These are the ones that are, I'm that are going around those that are doing the drive-through. And are those arrows going to be painted in so people do not drive in the opposite direction there?
They will. That's sort of, we call that like our striping plan. And it is one way to counterclockwise movement around them.
All right, just making sure, cause I can
Yeah, you bet.
See myself driving in the opposite direction.
Here we go. Jenna, is this one still a good one to show?
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it, you know, this was just a, you know, a start to it. There, there might be some changes as we, you know, coordinate with ODOT, but this shows the do not enter striping that she was just questioning, um, at that entrance, um, not the entrance, but near the, the building. And then, yeah, the delineation of making it into t- turning lanes, um.
And you can see though on the, we have like a striping signing plan that's included in there. That includes a do not enter striping on the ground as well as the one-way arrows. And then there's a do not enter sign as well at the southwest corner of that building.
Okay.
And I will say to elaborate more, throughout the whole circulation around the building, there is going to be arrows and and basically all of those drive aisles. Um, there was a lot of changes, uh, kind of going on. And there's a reason why kind of the site plans don't necessarily match is because we kind of switch architects midway. And so there's, we're all on the same page now, but there are, there, the intent is that the, all of the driving around the building will be delineated with arrows.
Okay, thank you.
In each direction.
Uh, okay, before we go on, it sounds like we've actually moved to testimony from the applicant. I, I do appreciate you jumping in and answering that question, but I'm gonna hold, have you hold off for just a moment and make, and ask if the commission has any other questions for staff at this time?
No.
Okay. If not, then I'd like to invite the applicant to come up. Can you please come up and give us your name and address? I, did we get your address?
Jenna.
Jenna?
Uh, she didn't say, state her address yet.
Okay. So could you give us your first and last name and your address for the record, please?
Yeah, Jim Taboric. Oh, Jenna, go ahead.
Jenna first and then Jim.
Yeah, I think, so Jim is technically the applicant and he is the architect. Uh, I am Jenna Sparrow Grove. Sparrow like the bird, Grove like a grove of trees.
Can I kind of intersect before we have him speak? Okay, um, thank you, Chair. Just a quick question. I, I don't know what the traffic or expectation, and I know that they've got the two lanes set up. Um, is there a plan for overflow cars on that order?
Do you want to speak to that, Jenna?
Uh, can you elaborate what you mean by overflow?
All right.
Yeah.
If staff can't answer that question, let's let the applicant present and then we can ask the applicant specific questions about their design.
Yeah, sorry, I
So I can get us back on track.
Yeah. I'll, I'll just say that that was not something that was proposed.
Okay.
Uh, overflow.
Plan.
Plan. Uh, but there is a pretty significant, um, parking lot there. So I don't know which is the best picture to show, but the anticipation is that if there's overflow, they'll go back into the parking lot, I think. But maybe Jenna can speak more directly to that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Jim, please, welcome, welcome to the planning commission. And thank you so much for allowing us to get back on to the the actual track to which we're supposed to be following.
Yeah, uh, Jim Taboric with Studio Three Architecture, uh, two-seven-five Court Street Northeast, Salem, Oregon nine-seven-three-oh-one.
Okay, um, do you have a presentation?
I, I don't really. I think Heidi covered it really well. Um, and obviously we're improving the sites. Otherwise bleak parking lot right now. We're adding a lot of landscaping, um, pedestrian safety conditions, uh, along the highway. And the building will be attractive. Popeyes does a great job of their standards of high-quality materials and exterior, uh, and glazing. Yeah, I think it'll be an improvement to the whole center there.
What's the capacity of the restaurant going to be?
Capacity, uh, I mean generally fifty or less. So it's, it's kind of what you'd expect.
Parking spaces.
Sorry?
Only twenty parking spaces.
There wouldn't be fifty cars. I'm thinking families or couples. So, yeah.
I might go alone.
Yeah, right. Same.
So do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant?
None other than what's been
Now, go ahead and now ask Jenna about, about the overflow. So I think by overflow, you're meaning if the queue gets too long.
Yeah.
Are they going to line up on the street?
Yes.
A different plan.
And I'm mostly asking because I don't, uh, obviously know the demand that there will be. And I know we had this discussion with, uh, on the
Every other restaurant of this nature.
Yes, and I, yeah. And then I am aware at least, again, I don't, I haven't checked out McDonald's and all I know is that it's never been an issue for me passing by there. But I also see that McDonald's, it's like a bigger building space versus like the square footage that I saw for this one. So that's why I'm kind of generally asking. And since I see the entrance to the drive-through close enough to where, you know, cars would be then trying to come in through there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we, and Jenna might be able to speak to that better, but we do have the two lanes as well, which really helps, uh, with that backing up and, uh, certainly not to the driveway. Um, yeah, Jenna, did you have any comments on that?
So, um, we had a traffic study done, um, which I'm not a traffic engineer, so that's a little bit out of my wheelhouse. But there was no concerns or mention about, um, you know, anticipated based off of how many trips they thought this would generate, that it would overflow, uh, into that drive aisle, uh, that's shared throughout the site. Um, and I actually think that compared to McDonald's, we have a much longer queue and more availability for, uh, cars, especially given, um, the entrance to the drive-through to McDonald's is right that first turn from Mount Hood Avenue. So I, we don't necessarily think there will be, uh, additional impact, impacts. But you can kind of see that, uh, there's an, the east-west drive aisle that is labeled there. That is just, that's the, the drive aisle width. So cars can queue up, you know, quite a bit further back from the actual order. Um, you know, beyond what's actually shown there. So I, I think right now there's nothing planned, but just to answer your question.
Thanks, Jenna. Yeah, that satisfies my inquiry.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I guess you, you had no issues with any of the, uh, conditions of approval that were listed out. There seems all in alignment with what you guys can do.
Yeah.
Namely, two of them that jumped out to me a little bit was like thirteen with the, the island tree down there. I mean, that seems like it's it's out there on an island, like getting irrigation stuff there, get a tree established. Is that gonna be reasonable, I guess, to accommodate?
Yeah, Jenna, did you see any issue with that? Just getting irrigation and making an island?
No, we're already having, um, we're already having to, uh, replace some of the asphalt in that uh, area. And we're going to have to make sure there's irrigation for that landscape strip near our proposed like ADA parking area. So it's basically just my, my, I assumed we would just saw cut from where that tree uh, is shown currently across the way. And then, yeah, just saw cut to that new island, uh, to, uh, bring in irrigation from there.
Cool. Yeah, thank you all.
Yeah, thank you for asking.
Other questions? Okay, well, thank you. Uh, do we have any buddy in the audience or online that wishes to speak in favor of this project? See anyone? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this project? Anyone online? All right, seeing none, there's no use, no reason to have a rebuttal. With that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And now we can deliberate.
Hopefully, ODOT will cooperate with the striping of the entrance and exit. I think that will be so much better. It, it, I mean, that, that it does, it is a pain point. And so even just delineating the lines and putting some arrows, that's gonna be a miracle for that intersection, let me tell you.
Yeah.
Also happy always to see that, uh, street improvement. Any potential concerns as far as the traffic arrows painted in? Has happened, that aside for me?
And I think that for a lot of people that don't know much about Woodburn, Woodburn has a very high degree of foot traffic. Um, there's a couple of really high-traffic amenities close by, whether it's the church or the Wellspring slash medical center across the street. Um, Woodburn does a lot of foot traffic, a lot of people walking. So anything we can do to make the, the sidewalk safer and the ADA accommodations, striping in the sidewalks, that's, it might seem from the outside to be overkill, but it really is going to be beneficial to the, the property owner and to the other properties. But it's also gonna make our, uh, area safer. So I'm glad that we did go through the, the time to have those as conditions of approv- of approval. Right? Any other comments? If not, I would entertain a motion. And just as an FYI, we often will get a, a suggested language that we can follow along to make sure we are compliant.
I move to approve DR twenty-five dash zero four with the conditions recommended by staff and the staff report. And direct staff to prepare final decision for the chair to sign.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Thank you. We appreciate you coming. And welcome to Woodburn. All right. Just that we have a work session.
I got a little too excited. I wanted to put everything away like, okay, let's go.
Yes. Are you ready for you to open up the work session on the ash borer beetle? Oh, God. All right. Let's go ahead and open up the session.
I move that we get rid of the beetles. I mean, the bad beetles, the bad tree beetles.
Are you gonna lead with the Portland news, Renata, that we all saw?
Not our commis-
Yeah.
Yep, but it's Look at her, pretty. She should have been in some nuts.
Okay, Commissioner Bartel, can you see the screen?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, uh, good evening, commissioners. Uh, Renata Weekly, I'm Special Projects Director, um, here. Last presentation on Emerald Ashbor occurred in February. Um, this is not a topic I like to cover with you all. I am not an arborist or forester. Um, but as we move through this presentation, you will note that if this is an all hands on deck, all departments on deck response. Um, Chris, I'm gonna ask that you chime in at any point, um, because his staff has been very involved as well. Um, so this, the intent of this work session is to, of course, accept comments or feedback from the planning commission, but really give you an update on what we've been doing, um, with little or no funding so far. Um, technical assistance from the state. Um, but we have taken some positive steps to respond to the ash borer and we have some action moving forward. So I asked Chris if it was okay to give you, um, an update. Um, and I met with the Parks Board on Tuesday night to give them an update as well. Uh, so the first four slides are a repeat for commissioners that were here, um, in February. Um, does everybody know, was everybody, everybody knows that we've been notified about Emerald Ashbor? Okay. Um, so the call came in around August, uh, twenty-twenty-four. Department of Forestry and Department of Agriculture, um, are the state agencies that are uh, tasked with dealing with, um, this kind of statewide issue. The beetles coming from the Midwest. Um, uh, initially, um, started on the east coast. Um, we were placed under quarantine for Yamhill, Marion, Clackamas Counties and Washington County, um, uh, in late twenty-twenty-four. And news came out yesterday that now, uh, Multnomah County was placed under quarantine. They've identified six beetles at, at least. And, you know, when you find six beetles, you know, there's going to be a lot more. Um, so the city's been doing our best to, uh, not create new materials. We're not the experts, but distribute materials via, via social media, um, the planning department, um, our parks department. Um, all of our public facilities and locations have these materials, um, for, um, getting information out to the general public. Um, and of course to our staff to help distribute. Uh, the Department of Forestry first found, um, the Emerald Ashbor in Wifels Park, actually. And so this is a website that was created by, uh, Department of Forestry. That's public-facing. Anybody can, and go here and, and look throughout the state, um, o- on this dashboard. Um, this isn't for anyone to upload data. As far as I understand, you have to be a certified person through Department of Agriculture, Department of Forestry. But on the next slide, you'll see that there's, um, uh, names associated with certified people who've been helping upload the data. So they've got volunteers who have become certified and are helping kind of collect the data. The yellow is, um, assumed, um, beetle sightings. And then the deep burgundy is confirmed by Department of Forestry or agriculture staff. And you'll see, so, so here in Woodburn, we've got sightings, but the issue with ash is that, um, the native Oregon ash tree and other ash trees, they really like to have their roots wet. So they've been planted and they're really good about being, um, along some of our streams and wetland areas, which is great for temperature control. And these are trees that really can sustain being in those areas. And so that's where you're going to find them. And that will create a problem for us down the road because we need to find other trees that we can replace them with. So Buick Creek outside of town, east of Woodburn is, is where we're seeing a lot of those sightings as well. So here's Wifels. Um, this summer, our Parks Department, um, after, um, training for a lot of our facilities and maintenance crews, um, led by Department of Forestry and Ag. Um, we actually went out there. We identified the holes. We had communities and other parks crews, Salem, um, other, you know, Kaiser, other crews came out, received the training. Jeff Crabtree on our parks and facilities maintenance has been fantastic. He's been hosting people out of the site, along all the other things that he needs to do. Um, we were asked if we could host a training at our library in March, bring people out to the site. And of course, we're going to do that because we're trying to save costs for everybody and create those networks and connections. Um, we're talking about intergovernmental agreements when it comes to cutting down trees. If we're all going to have to cut down ash trees, should we be, can we be signing contracts with Marion County, um, to reduce costs for everybody? Can we be buying trees, replanting trees with arborists? Um, so those conversations are happening. But before we cut down the trees in Wifels, um, training was conducted. Uh, we posted signage on the north and south ends of the park. We know we have a lot of walkers going through there. To use social media. Um, we did send, uh, Jesse Cuomo's team did send notice to the surrounding property owners to let them know those trees were coming down and why. Um, about twenty trees came down. We had a, a We had a city councillor that lives nearby and she gave feedback to the city that some of her neighbors said, "Thank you for sending us notice so that we were aware why you guys were doing this. So we're trying our best to inform residents." Those trees came down. And then just about a month ago, Jeff continued to monitor and he's noticed six more trees that are likely going to have to be removed. So we're going to go through that same process. And, and the, it is, yeah, it's really unfortunate because I know that part, you, the planning commission worked really hard on the tree inventory and tree code. So I don't like having to be here to kind of tell this story and provide these updates.
Renata, would you remind me and maybe the commission, which trees have to come out? Is it only ash trees that have to come out? Is it only infected ash trees?
There are three trees that I can't think of the names. It's like a white fringe.
I didn't mean.
And ash.
I just. Ash and olive.
Thank you. Yeah. White fringe, right? Ash and olive trees.
So the city's decision on when to take out trees is that's an olive, so it's coming out and it's in this facility.
So, yeah, and I'll get into this a little bit. Thank you. So right now, the response by the city is those trees that we notice are dead or dying, or we see the D, the escape holes that the beetles are leaving because of the danger. It's kind of a case-by-case basis, but immediate action for removal. We started looking into, and that's kind of the next part. So Jesse's response is we have to take this on a case-by-case basis. But the recommendations from the Midwest and the experts is you really need to do two things. And that's what we've been working on developing. And that's part of my next presentation is you first need an inventory. Like, what is the scale of the problem? So we've been working on, how do we get an inventory? And I'll speak about that next. And once you have an inventory, the recommendation is for an Emerald Ash Bore Response Plan. The city of Portland is the only community in Oregon that yet has adopted a response plan. And they're ahead of the game because they've just been found out. But they have a whole forestry department. They have a staff of 40 or so. So they were ahead of the game and good for them. But that helps staff identify the process for what trees you will remove immediately, which trees you may be able to treat and what the next steps are. So, so there's a process for that. And we're working on developing our own plan for the city. But until we have an inventory and we know the real scale of the problem, we haven't moved staff through that process. There is a plan for treatment. The reality is 99% of all trees will be ash trees. The estimate is that we'll lose them, but we could slow. We could slow. We could extend the life of those heritage or kind of more important trees by treating them. The recommendations are if you have, you know, right now, anything that is not a significant tree is the language you use, right? 24 inches, take it down immediately. If you know that you have an ash tree that's less than 24 inches in diameter, just get rid of it now. Because one, you're going to reduce the number of host trees. So you're going to slow the spread through the community. And the longer you let that grow, the more dangerous it's going to become. So that's kind of the first action that a lot of communities are doing and then preserving the ones that they can. But we're, we, we are about to sign a contract for completion of the inventory and I have a few slides on that. That helped?
Yeah.
Okay. Just a couple of other things that, so we, we've created a, Marcella Public Information Officer has a Emerald Ash Bore Information and Resources page. Again, the city is not creating new information. We are simply making sure that our community members, residents, know where to access the information that we're directing them to those pages. We've conducted additional trainings on-site at Weifels where we know we have that because we want to make sure that all of our staff is staff that's involved in identification, you know, is, is learning and adept at that. But we're helping our other community members. And Chris's department has been, you know, involved in updating their tree removal permit. So I'm going to paraphrase this. And then if I get this wrong. So staff added to the tree removal permit that removal of an ash tree, the fee that you pay for this permit is waived. But the recommendation was that we still require folks to, to complete this permit. That will allow us to document where the trees are lost and help us report on the scale, not only to you, to the city council, but to funders. When we pursue and we say, "We need help replacing our tree canopy," or just reporting to the state about the impact, we can say, "These are how many folks in our community had to take down these trees." Public Works who manages street trees, same thing. No fees required, but please, we're requiring folks to fill out the permits. We are also requiring for street trees, replacement of those street trees. That's what the current code requires, and we're not giving folks waivers. We are strongly encouraging replacement of private property, street trees. We will not charge for a mitigation fee and lieu because of the cost and impact to property owners that these hazardous trees are creating.
Nice good question.
Feedback can be provided to Chris Kerr. Yes.
Okay, I have a question. So the city is pretty awesome because they have this free tree thing, and they've had it every year for at least the past three years where if you live in the city and you have a place to put a tree, you can apply to get, it's really $50 towards a tree at Owl's. And all you do is fill it out, tell them where you're going to put it. There's a selection of trees they allow, and you can choose small, medium, or large. I think we should, that all, that should all be included with the information we're handing out to the public that, yes, you might have to take a tree down and you have to replace it, but you can get some financial help to do it.
I hear you and thank you for kind of putting that in the recording. Anytime Chris or other staff interact with someone who say, "This is an ash tree. I need a waiver." Of course, that's information we're going to share. The program is closed for the season right now. But yes, we will definitely, that, that fund is, it's refunded every year. And as we're pursuing and working with other communities, I'm working on a grant application right now. We're pursuing additional funding because we think the need is going to increase. More folks may need to be cutting down trees. We're hoping that it's, the scale's not too large. So we're telling that story to funders, saying, "Please help us make sure that that fund sticks around." It's closed right now, just for, for seasonal. I think it opens in November again. And thank you for that comment and, and any street. So the street tree program has a different fund where there is assistance there. The urban tree program, Chris's staff will come across folks that are taking down ash trees and can share that information there with them.
And in the same vein, making sure that it's real easy to find out a replacement recommendation.
Right.
Yeah. And you would hate for somebody to take out an ash tree and then plant an olive tree.
Yeah. The, the olive, ash, and white fringe are listed on the prohibited trees list. So yes, I will, I will say Public Works and Planning and other departments have gone through WDO permits, fees, have really kind of done a comprehensive look and said, "What is the scale?" Not only to the city, where would we be a barrier? Where would we make it difficult to replant? And where, you know, what are the financial impacts to not, you know, to residents and where can we reduce that? So it was a comprehensive look so far. These are the things that we've been doing over the past three months, six months. And there, that Owl's program, yes, it goes up to even, I've seen maybe even the values higher depending on the tree. And there's a list of which trees can be planted, all reviewed by planning permitted trees. So here's that reference to the Tree Inventory and Response Plan. So when you, when you hear from the Department of Forestry and they give you that news and they say, you know, "Here's your news and I'm sorry, we don't have any funding to help you," which is really unfortunate. We are pursuing any and all funding sources, including partnerships, IGAs. We have something working with the Marion Soil and Water Conservation District right now. But we also have strong partners in the Pudding River Water, Pudding River Watershed Council who have identified themselves, a nonprofit partner that can have the expertise to do the tree inventory. So we've been scoping work for them and Parks Department and Public Works budgeted for this fiscal year. So it took some time, but they had to put it in the budget, a contract for that tree inventory. So we're just kicking that off because we did not have one before. We did have a tree inventory for about a four-by-eight block radius of our downtown that was completed about 10, 12 years ago as part of the Front Street or First Street project. Five ash trees in our downtown, all of which are, are pretty healthy right now. They've been examined. So maybe the scale isn't going to be as large as, you know, for a four-by-eight block radius. But we really need to know for the entire community, we're going to include right-of-way. It's not our responsibility to manage or take down those trees. It's the fronting property owners. But we want to make sure we're getting information to those fronting property owners so they could take action to protect themselves from future danger. And then it will also inventory all of the city's managed properties. So here's an example of what a tree inventory will look like. This is the software that the state is funding, so that is a service they're providing. We will have access to this for free. Our GIS staff has looked into this. And Pudding River Watershed Council will be able to upload the data here. This is an example from Salem. Salem, Kaiser, and Portland have all completed this inventory and uploaded it, I think Eugene. So the larger communities, as you would expect. This is all of their trees. And, and of course, this, the scale, this isn't all of their trees as you zoom in, right? It, it populates. But I looked into an area of just their ash trees. And according to Salem's inventory, they have 285 ash trees currently. And then I, I'm familiar with the Minto Island area, so I zoomed in there. And there's a new subdivision close to that area. And I was surprised. I would say that subdivision was built maybe in the past 10 years. Quite a few ash trees planted, you know, not too long ago at diameter breast height, you know, five inches. So, you know, this is, it's, it's just new for Oregon. So they'll be dealing with that as well. 285 for all of Salem? I mean, I, could be worse. It's still a lot of trees to lose. So we will have something like this. I, I will say, within the next year, I'm hoping much sooner. This will be public-facing. And as soon as we have it uploaded, we will be pushing this out to residents so that they can self-identify how close to ash trees are, start to become familiar with them, pushing out resources for them, how the city can assist, what their responsibilities are, all of that information. The other thing we've been working on is what's called an Emerald Ash Bore Response Plan. There are templates out there. There's a model out of Colorado. And initially, when, you know, the, the recommendation was to develop a response plan, I thought, what's the purpose of developing a plan? We need to get to action. But then starting to think about what their recommendations were. You know, I might not be here in five years. Chris might, you know, it's, it's a way for the city to like track all of the work we had to do. And what I like about it is the, the one that we're developing will be kind of a checkbox way of like, okay, we did that. We need to move on to the next task. What's next for us? And it's also an opportunity to tell that story to you, to the city council of like, this is what we accomplished in 2025. This is what we need to do in 2026. And it allows us to tell that story to funders as well. Again, just trying to get funding assistance. We did, you know, we accomplished five things in 2025. We did the tree inventory. We did the plan that you recommended we do. Now give us funding so that we can start treating trees and we can start replanting. So we're working through, you know, as you can see, we've done the review of local tree permits and the fee schedules. We've participated in these local and we continue to participate in these coordinated meetings to see where there's efficiencies and, and sharing of resources. We're helping in the local information distribution. We're creating that local inventory. So we're working on those, those items. And then next, like, you know, actual action. So next steps, the Pudding River Watershed Council is starting the inventory where we're weeks away from having that contract signed. They actually say that it's best to do the work in the beginning, like spring. So they, they will start the work you know, in the fall. But I don't anticipate that it will be done. We'll probably share the information with you early in 2026. And then we'll immediately start outreach to property owners. It's November 2025. There's an application going to the Marion Soil Water Conservation District. Pudding River is, is working on that application. And it's actually to help fund the inventory work that we're trying to get done. They will reimburse us for work that's already been completed. We've already had conversations with them. So we decided to just proceed with the work because we, we don't want to wait. We're working on that draft response plan. Again, that document will evolve as we continue to complete tasks and identify new tasks. Once we have the inventory completed, the Parks Community Services Department will come up with a methodology and we'll report back to the Parks and Planning Commission on how they propose to inventory, or I'm sorry, to a treatment plan. And, and we'll bring that information back to you all. So that's where we're at.
Can I ask a random question? Do you mind? Sure. And Renata has forgotten more about this than I know, so directed more toward, towards her. When I think of these inventories, it's, it's usually a lot easier to inventory city property, city rightaways. Once you get into private property, it can be a challenge.
We're not doing private property.
Right. So this is only city rightaway and city park lands. And then we'll just inform folks what ash trees look like, what the dangers are, so they should investigate their own. And we'll show them the program as to how it's easy, cheap, and simple to take it down. And maybe even give them replacement trees for their private, something like that. I'm trying to think of the incentive for a property owner to take down a tree on their own property if it's not vested. Because that feels like a really hard sell for a lot of people.
Yeah, so that we're definitely no entering of private property. It's not what we do normally. Even right-of-way trees, really not the city's jurisdiction, not our responsibility. The, the danger that comes, the potential for danger to private property cars and to the public walking on sidewalks. I think the risk is large there, even if the liability is on private property owners. I think we want to participate in identifying that risk and helping inform the public. So that's why most communities will do a right-of-way tree inventory. And then obviously, our properties in areas like Weifels and Senegal, I think I will get to your question in a second. We can even fell those trees and leave them where they are. In the case of Weifels, because the ground was wet, Jeff had to take the trees down and they didn't chip them for several months. It was too wet. And that's an approved practice. You just can't move those trees. The, the beetle does not move, I think they don't fly more than 10 feet. Like, they don't transport themselves. It's human transport, moving a firewood and material that's moving this, this beetle and spreading it. So it's totally fine to fell the tree on site if it's determined to be safe to do. So in Senegal Creek, that's probably what we're going to do with a lot of those trees. Or if it's even safe to let it die in place and just fall as long as it doesn't pose any risk to, you know, it's not close to a property line, that is an approved practice. You are not helping spread that beetle. And that snag will stay there. It still creates habitat. You're not spreading the beetle. So it's, decisions like that still need to be made. When we start to do outreach to property owners about right-of-way, that's, I think, the same time we do the big push. We, we are trying to push information out right now on social media. Please take brochures, you know, help us do the same. The longer you wait, and again, I'm not, I've just had to attend many sessions on this and I'm trying to learn. The longer you wait on an ash tree or any of these hazardous trees and let them grow, the more brittle they become and the more, the larger, the larger the risk. And I'm told that arborists will charge you a lot more money because they become a lot more dangerous. So we really need So we really need to encourage folks to please try and identify on their private property. If they have an ash tree as soon as possible, because it will save them danger and cost. Um, and trying to get that messaging out there is going to be difficult. But, but that's why, but, but we're not going to go inventory for people. We, we just can't, we don't have the capacity. Is that what you were asking?
It is. And I, I mean, that's, that's the communication that has to get out, right? Again, why would I take down a healthy tree on my property? Well, for those reasons, right? It's A, it's dangerous. If you don't care about the sort of good of the environment, et cetera. Um, uh, the branches are going to fall. These are the kind of items that you have.
It will become a larger problem if the longer.
And more offensive to take it down later. I, I'm just trying to think of those because it's, you have to be sympathetic to the homeowners. So I didn't do anything to kind of deserve this. My neighbor's keeping his ash tree, right? But I'm going to take mine down for the good of the community. Um, it's a lot. So I, it, this gets a lot to, we do a lot of plans around here. And here's another one that Renata is going to be doing. I think the punchline is the end of that, which is hopefully this will lead to funding at the end of the day. We'll be in, at the kind of forefront of most of the communities, uh, in this state. And when funds become available, we can say, we've already taken these steps. We have an adopted plan. We've got this program in place. We have an expert who knows what they're doing. And then when we go out, we'll be able to get that money. And that's, that's, that's the big benefit because that will help everybody, whether it's inventorying, inventory, taking down the trees, uh, or just the education component for the public. It's, it comes down to cash and those resources, this will help us get there. So that's, that's a huge benefit.
Hey, uh, I've been, any funder that I'm engaging with, I am trying to get assistance to take down trees and nobody likes that topic. And so I've kind of switched it and said, okay, will you help us plant trees? Not only for the city, because we know we're going to be losing trees and prop, property owners. So we have this program. Look, we already have a program. Just help us make it a larger program. So I'm trying, um, that I'm, I am concerned, I, you know, selfishly. Of course, I don't wish that the beetle had spread to Portland. Um, but the media attention that it's getting, I feel like the attention for assistance to wood burn is going to diminish.
Don't you live in Portland?
But, uh,
And you know something about beetles?
But now it seems like other communities, like, maybe it's on my car. Yes. But like now the, the concern is it's spreading faster than, you know, probably even the state anticipated. And now unfortunately, like just that, that's awful. But also who's going to be, now there's more communities that are going to be demanding limited money and it just is worse for us. So. Any other questions for Renata?
Just to get me down or deny?
Okay. With that, I will go ahead and close the work session. Any business from the commission?
Are we going to talk about time?
Yeah. Can I jump in on the agenda just for a second?
Sure.
I, I put on the agenda, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't have anything else with it other than I thought of just based on the last conversation that we had, you all had the last meeting. You wanted to at least discuss modifying your, uh, start times for your meetings. And kind of super quick background that Chris Kilmer and I did was there's nothing in your actual adopted rules that says you can't modify your time. There's nothing in it that says it must be on some date or some, I've seen city charters that dictate these things. There's nothing in there that will prohibit it. Um, and staff doesn't really have an opinion and we're indifferent if you move your times up or down. Uh, but I think it's worth mentioning that should you decide to modify it, um, and make that decision as a commission, I'd like to take that to the city council and see if they had some feedback. Because a lot of you, not a lot, most of your actions go to the city council. Um, you take a lot of direction from the city council, the quasi additional hearings that you have. Um, don't go to them, but they get appeals on them. And I think it, uh, I think it's a community wide impacts are enough that if you wanted to modify the time, I'd at least want to run it past them, if that's all right, should you decide to go in that direction. I didn't really have much else to say. I just wanted to kind of open up. You all wanted to discuss it. It's certainly available to you.
And I know Lisa, I don't think you're Chair Ellsworth, I don't think you were at that meeting, but I'm wondering if we could, even if we could move up the start time to 6:30. It's, the reason I do this remotely is because it's kind of opposite my schedule most of the time. And I, I love coming, but it's, it's hard when I get up at 3:30 in the morning to come to a meeting that might not get over till after nine or 10 o'clock at night. So it doesn't always happen. They're not always late, but I would love to be able to come in person more often. It's just the seven o'clock start is, is late for me. But I know other people have different time issues. So if, you know, if they work way out of town and have to come home and get the family together and everything, I understand that too. It's, I love being able to do it remotely because I can still participate. But that's why I brought it up.
I know I wasn't here for that meeting. Um, I do have three concerns with it. One is I personally have a DARs committee meeting that also meets on Thursdays. And hopefully they'll be done by 6:30, but they're not always. Um, so sometimes I have a meeting that goes from five till almost seven. And with those nights, if they go to seven, I don't get to go home at all. Um, so that really makes it a little bit longer for me. I could just work, if that were the only concern I had, I could work with Jamie and make sure that we got that one. That we got out on time. Uh, I know that when I was on city council, there were counselors that lived in or worked in Portland and they couldn't make it any earlier. Um, what about 13:00 in the day? And, um, the other thing was, before we get to that, the other one, the, the other concern I had was the public. Is six, would 6:30 be easier for the public or more difficult? Uh, not that we have a lot of public comment, but, um, I, I do wonder about that. Other than that, I don't necessarily care. I, I would like to go to bed a little earlier because it does make a long night for me as well. Um, I didn't get to hear what the rest of the commissioners thought.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty open to whatever, uh, but, but I do work in Portland. So, I mean, if it's, if we moved it to like a five o'clock, I'd really need to plan around that. But a 6:30, I don't, I don't foresee any big issue with that.
Okay. And I can make it from Salem by 6:30. Like, if we decided that we would like to propose that, even if we do it for, as it comes to winter time, I like getting out a little bit earlier because it's so dark.
I don't have an issue with it.
Um, considering in, I'm glad you brought out, brought up the audience, um, or potential audience that we could have as well. Um, because we definitely, some of the comments could be obvious, especially if they're not on the agenda. That's some of the first things I get asked and if they can't make it right at the beginning, that could be very difficult. Um, but yeah, I kind of agree with, I'm pretty open and at the same time, um, Commissioner Bartel, obviously, if you could make it, that's awesome.
That's a good point.
Yeah, in person. Cause I used to do it online and coming in, in person, it's just, there's a big difference. It feels better. Um,
And from an applicant standpoint, um, I know that a lot of our applicants are coming down from Portland. Will that cause a hardship for any of our applicants to start earlier, Eugene?
So probably guess officially, I don't have any kind of poll on that. Um, I don't imagine it does. I can tell you, there's other, first of all, applicants have a lot of money on the table and, you know, engineers and architects are getting paid to come down here. They'll come down whenever you call them. I, I don't think you need to worry that much about. I'd be more concerned, just, I'd be more concerned about the impacts on the public. And there's certainly a good argument to say that a lot of folks don't want to be here at 9:45 at night. I have been at meetings where people have been here and left, right? They're here and it's, I mean, for the big heavy meetings, this 95% of the time, this is not an issue. But when it is, and we're running, even if we're not super late, even 9:45 is pushing. People don't know when the meeting will end and they have needed, haven't even had a chance to speak. And that occasionally happens. It's a bit frustrating. Um, I can tell you kind of personal experience, I've done meetings in lots of different cities. No one starts meetings after seven. I don't know anyone who starts a meeting at 7:30. Um, starting earlier is not that uncommon, six and 6:30. And in fact, the city council technically meets at 6:45 often, if that matters, uh, when they have meetings. And, um, it's so, that's, I don't think it's uncommon. I've, Chris has more input on it. But again, I don't have an official poll on it. I would not be too, I would not be concerned about whether applicants can make it. I'd, I would be shocked if that were a problem.
The only input I have is that we do also give applicants the opportunity to, um, do all their presentations and everything online as well. So if it was going to be like a significant issue where they're like, there's just no way I can make it down. That, you know, it's not ideal. Obviously it's always better when they're in the room. Um, but we've certainly had applicants come in and do their presentation online to the planning commission. And it still works fine. Um, so the preference would be for them to be here, but if it's a significant burden, they would have the option to do it online and that would be fine.
So considering like the two kind of limitations on, on time here, um, Commissioner Bartel, would a 6:30 be a significant improvement? And then for Chair Ellsworth, would 6:30 be doable considering that you still have that other meeting?
I could just have Jamie tell her, yeah. You can have her stop.
They're in the other room, the other side of City Hall.
It's in that room right there.
Those, those DARs meetings are efficient.
Actually, the half hour would be awesome because like tonight, we're going to be done probably 8:30 ish. That I could have come in for, but when I looked at a longer agenda and one of them was a work session, I just didn't really know. And so I, I, even starting a half hour earlier, if it did tend to go late, nah, it goes late. But at least I know I have more of a chance of not having that extended. But again, I just brought it up. I, uh, if it's okay and everybody agrees to try it, I would love that. If not, I fully understand. And if you ever think the meeting's not going to last too long, just let me know and I'll still come over. But it's, it's tough. That 3:30 comes real early.
Why don't you do it since they're 3:30?
Uh, you, you know, running a medical clinic that's 90% medicated is a, is a challenge. And there are things I have to do with people on the East Coast. So I have to be up and ready and, and stuff, not, not all the time, but a lot.
And I, uh, so we're not, we're going to make just one kind of a comment or a recommendation. Uh, I'll speak for Commissioner Laston who's not here. I think he should probably get his input as well. Uh, if you were looking to have a vote, I, I just hate that he hasn't. I don't remember him having an opinion at the last meeting when it came up.
Uh, I don't think he gave it. I, I think that's.
Entirely, entirely up to you all, but I, I, he's not here and it's so unfortunate. It's a, and it could have impacted.
I would definitely say, yeah, it would be, the way that I would approach it, it would be to have a vote to recommend to city council that, um, the commission meet at 6:30 instead of seven. That would be the way that I would frame it.
And I would like it on the agenda in case there were comments from the public. If people want to come in and, and either agree or disagree or, or have a say. So if we actually put it on the next agenda.
That's a good idea.
And then Commissioner Laston will know in advance.
Right.
He can make it, he can give his input.
Great. Uh, simple enough. I'll just put it on as a, a agenda item to recommendation to move it to 6:30. Senator? Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
And I want to say we've done pretty good now in like keeping it with it, like within nine. But I also want to knock on wood because whenever somebody says it'll be a quick one. Not making eye contact. Just because they're avoiding me.
Maybe the staff could report could have a scale of controversialness. Where are we on that scale?
So was that the staff update or does staff actually have an update?
I can keep it super fast. So we're not going to have a meeting on the 25th, but we are expecting to have a meeting on October 9th. I think that will be, uh, we're doing some revisions to the transportation system plan. Uh, there may be a complex annexation on there. Maybe not, that's close. Um, but I, I may have just the, the transportation system plan, which is not a major rewrite, but it's a legislative item for you all to make a recommendation for the council. Uh, Jen, just super fast, I can keep this in like 30 seconds. Uh, at the last council meeting, we formally, they formally adopted those FEMA recommendations that we've kind of bantered back and forth, waiting, hoping it would go away. This is, I'm sorry?
Do we have FEMA?
Yeah, but I was hoping they would have all gone away, but just kind of a quick refresher. And in case you hear this from the public, because it's, it's pretty significant. We had a lot of public feedback on it. We had more at the city council. Uh, this is a new, essentially a new requirement that's come down from FEMA for a variety of reasons, where we have additional regulations and restrictions on, uh, development in the floodplains. It affected about 680, I believe, property owners in the community. Um, and at the end of the day, what it means is there's an additional code provision and our WDO, it's going to require a habitat assessment to be done for any development in those areas. And at the end of the day, it's going to mean that every one of these R quad approvals, we call them R quad approvals. Most of them don't come to you. Most of them are just type one reviews, uh, that we're going to get. Our people have those applications to do any kind of development. I mean, just to do pavement on the back of their yard. If there's a, if there's a floodplain on their property, they don't even have to be in the floodplains. But if it's on their property, that's going to trigger this requirement that FEMA now has, that they're going to, private property owners and or developers are going to go out and have to hire a private professional qualified specialist, like a, a habitat specialist or someone who's, uh, is an expert in, uh, whatever biological fishery, whatever these degrees are that they have, are going to have to do this analysis and they're going to have to pay for it. Um, and, and it won't be cheap and it's a pain in the neck. Um, those requirements are now in our code, right? They're effective already, became effective Monday night. And we'll be doing them internally, but we'll just see. I'm just letting you all know that it is what it is. It's the, it's the least painful option that we had as a city, those requirement that came to us. And for what, what it's worth, they're technical in the interim, uh, requirements. We're going to have to modify them again when the feds change them in about 18 months. So that, I think that's just kind of worth pointing out. And just kind of development around town. You probably saw, uh, very recently, we saw what we call that kind of pop up tilt up construction walls over here downtown. If you just look just north, South Commerce Way, right next to the World by Ellis Development, sort of on the east side of Front Street driving out of town. Um, you, if you haven't, you'll see them. That's 150,000 square foot of industrial development. There's no tenant at this time. They're building them just to put them up. That'll help them lease out those spaces. Uh, but those are developments that are going in just south of where that Lake Salt Tower is. Um, those are the big ones. And the Boone Six Park is underway. If you want to drive down and look at the city park down at the end of Boone's Ferry Roads, like the last property in the city. Uh, you know, that sort of six phase, uh, Boone's Crossing development. This is a park, it's a three acre park. It's going to look fantastic. It's got a lot of really nice amenities in it, hopefully to be done. And I'm going to put Jesse to the, under the gun and I'll say six months.
Valley Floral also being framed up now.
Yeah. That was all. Thanks.
Anybody else? No, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved that we adjourned.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor of adjournment? Aye. All right. Good night, Deb.
Thank you, Deb.
Night, thanks.